You'll see in April that we have a rather busy month. We won't be surprised by that, but to go through it is another matter entirely. So you'll see on April 12th, and if you'll bear with me, I need to bring the packet up on my screen for myself. So uh in April, uh we have on April 12th, why did I want to, oh, yes, sorry. Not very good at this single screen stuff here. April 12th, we have a joint meeting with the Fair Board in the mid morning to noon. Then on April 15th, we have our first Budget Committee meeting of the year. This is our shared experience with new members of the Budget Committee. We will be receiving the Clean Water Services budget on the 19th. And as you know, our Budget Committee meeting for the CWS budget will be May 9th. Then the following week, uh, the Washington County budget will likely be published on the 26th, which I believe is Friday, I might have that date a little wrong. And the presentation of that budget to the Budget Committee will follow that Monday, the 29th. Excuse me. And at the same time in April, starting in April and into May, we'll have the CWS surveys as well as the six-month survey for our county council. So we have a lot going on in April in addition to all of the work session and board topics that you see. And then, of course, we know into the month of May, we have Budget Committee meetings for the two different agencies. And then I just want to highlight in June that at the end of the month, we'll have the State of the County event as well. So those are just some things I wanted to highlight. And so I guess at this point, we should check in and see if you have any questions or any other highlights you would like to share. Vice Chair Fai or Commissioner Teresa, anything?
I I appreciate the review. You know, I don't have anything else to share at this point.
Yeah, no, this is, this is why we go over it is just in case it helps center us. Um, I know I've just recently started updating my summer vacation plans. And so I need to finalize those specific dates and get those to staff. I'm hopefully arranging those so it doesn't conflict with any of our meetings at all. As well as into around the Labor Day weekend and so forth. So that is something that will be helpful to us in our board planning. And we'll see more of that later when we go over the roundtable planning. So if if you all could get your tentative or absolute known vacation plans to staff, that would be most useful. So, yeah, um, we just, we sync up on these topics here in the monthly roundtable just to help us be anchored and hopefully to eliminate surprises from the board to staff. So that's pretty much it for now. Yes, Commissioner, Vice Chair Fleet, Fai. Oh, sorry.
Whoever's talking.
Commissioner Teresa will like to say something.
I just want to make it, I just want to make a comment here that with Commissioner Willie out today and Maida is out ill today, I just asked that maybe Jory or somebody make sure that we're taking notes for Commissioner Willie to to review these dates and to make sure he gets his vacation on the calendar and that type of thing. So, yeah, just thinking about others.
Yeah, no, that's great.
And the one other thing I wanted to ask, we have Tracy here for Clean Water Services in the room for with us, Chair Harrington. May 9th is still on for for Clean Water Services. I know in the rolling agenda says it's reserved for Clean Water Services Budget Committee, so that's still.
It's, it's, it's a known quantity. It's not up in the air at all. You're just, I think, picking up on the vocabulary between the two agencies, right? That our Washington County staff doesn't, uh, can't take ownership for our commitments as the Board of Directors for CWS.
Thank you.
So, yes, our day is reserved for that CWS budget meeting.
Yes, and Tracy is nodding her head in agreement with you, Chair Harrington.
Yes, very politely said, yes, that's it. That is my understanding of this.
Yeah, there's no uncertainty around that.
There is not.
Okay, um, I also, uh, we don't have it. We don't have the August dates in front of us yet, and we'll come back to this with the rolling, uh, rolling calendar. Um, but I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I've decided to not go on the uh, trip, the CWS trip for the International Water Association Water Congress. Because I want to have a summer this year. With your grace, I was able last year to help with my mom's situation. And so I pretty much didn't have a summer in Oregon last year, so I really want that. So I'm going to opt out of that trip. I know you all will learn a lot on that trip. Uh, the workshops are really excellent, so I applaud your doing that. And having that shared experience as well, so.
Speaking of that, I'm glad you brought that up, Chair Harrington. Have we finalized the days? I know we were thinking of extending the day. But we have not. So is it longer trip now or is it just a conference?
I'll check and confirm that. I don't want to commit to that without.
Let me, let me review that for you, Commissioner Fai.
Thank you.
I believe, uh, that I know that Diane and An uh, have provided information. I think it went to all of you as well with our February, uh, CWS Learning Day. The way that conference works is there, there's the conference. And before the conference, there are workshops, and after the conference, there are workshops. So, um, we'll come back to this, I think, with the Roundtable Planning Document where the maximum extent, including travel days to Toronto, to and from, is defined. So we'll, we'll get into those dates a little bit later, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Harrington.
Yep, yep. Okay, well, I think we've, we've gone over some useful information and and slowed down a little bit in the hopes of Commissioner Rogers getting here. Uh, but I think it's time for us to switch over to the remaining items on our roundtable agenda today. So, uh, now is a good time. Vice Chair Fai, since you're in the room to to manage the room while I'm on Zoom to move on to the next agenda topic.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Danny, that's you. Take it away.
Thank you.
My ACA colleagues are going to join me up here. All right, well, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you a little bit about the BCC Work Plan. Um, and so what we wanted to do is just to kind of bring us back to the purpose. So, um, as requested by Chair Harrington, the CEO Office, uh, under, you know, Tanya's leadership, uh, prepared a full calendar year look ahead. Um, that really was, was to to get into how are the time of the uh, the Board of County Commissioners spent particularly at board meetings? And so we wanted to reinforce that this eventually would be a board document owned by the board. Um, but informed by staff. Um, and so, um, just a little bit of history about sort of how we got to today. So in December, the request was made for this document. Um, and so we spent a lot of our December, um, engaging with, um, our CLT leaders, um, our ACAs to really try to come up with as comprehensive and as big of a list as possible. And at that time, we really didn't want to miss anything. Um, and so in January, you got the fruits of that comprehensive big look. Um, and so, uh, that's when you got to review that first draft. Um, and so as you can imagine, um, the, when, when you all received that first draft, we, we started to get some feedback. Um, and, uh, so a lot of the feedback that we heard was, you know, this is a lot. Um, and while we tried to provide a lot of context and and different cells, we, we heard that it was maybe a little bit too much. So, um, so what we did during the month of February was try to do a refresh where we focused, um, our work on trying to cull down, um, some of the items at the board meetings in particular. Is what we heard there was a little bit too much on and to try to think about if there were other ways to utilize your time. Uh, the other thing that we tried to do in February was, um, some of the cells. We, we heard feedback that they weren't very useful. So we really just tried to focus in on that cell that talks about the board engagement and to talk about, you know, sort of what would be an activity, what might be a board meeting, a board, a board work session, um, a training, et cetera. And one of the things that we, we probably will need to continue to refine is that we, we just had the word briefings as that being one item. And we've heard feedback that that's a little bit confusing because does that mean that it's a written briefing? Is it a one-on-one? Is it a two-on-one? And so, um, we'll, we, you know, we, we got that feedback. Um, and so without time to change it all full sail, because we have to go through, through all of us and then through our colleagues at CLT, we will sort of add some more cells to that to make it more, uh, more understandable so that folks understand.
Hey, Danny, am I the only one who's given you that feedback so far?
Uh, just about the briefing.
Yeah, yeah. So don't worry, let me share my feedback with with my colleagues. I, because I'm only one of five, so, uh, uh, don't worry, I, I, I just want to make sure that my colleagues have the opportunity to hear my feedback and that we as a board can provide common direction for staff.
Oh, of course, sorry. Um, so, so kind of where we're at is, is that we want to give you this new, uh, format, this new form. And what we thought we could do is, um, show you some of the specific ways that it has changed since January. Um, and we'll do that, uh, by, um, each of our different, uh, portfolio areas. So, um, for example, uh, we'll start with WCCLS or Library Systems. So in January, um, and I'm going to focus you on the BCC engagements. Um, in January, um, the top three items, so, um, like, uh, the West Slope Library Evaluation Consultant Selected and and receives work, that was originally stated, uh, as a board work session. Um, and so we changed that to a briefing because the, the, that was really sort of like a level of staff work. And we, we had anticipated that it would start as a, a written memo. Um, and that if you were interested, that you could sort of ask for, you know, a more extensive work session or or even board meeting. Um, the same goes for the next three, uh, the, the next three items. So the WCCLS is undergoing an evaluation of their governance and funding. Um, and so we wanted to, in the first draft, we wanted to show you everything that was happening so that you saw the whole story. And so what we, we sort of went back and said, well, it seems like it's, it's very board meeting heavy. And if, since we received that feedback, we said, well, we could probably accomplish, um, getting the information out without their needing necessarily decision-making. Um, and and be able to accomplish that through written briefings, um, at the first two phases of that, um, of that project. So what you saw and what you're experiencing now in this new version is that where you had four board meeting engagements through work sessions. Um, now you have one work session and three, uh, briefings. So, um, what does that look like big picture? Um, so we wanted to focus this on quarter two, but it's also inclusive of March, because we're at March. Um, so, uh, when we kind of just did a sort, we found that your quarter two, if we were looking at your time wholesale, is that now within quarter two, there are 18 briefings. And what we can refine and and define what that means in terms of memos versus one-on-ones or two-on-ones. Work sessions, uh, will be 12, six board items, five activities, one budget item, and one training and one executive session. So that's April through June, um, there. So that's the big picture. And I think what you're seeing is that, um, you know, much like Goldilocks, right? Like, we're, we're trying to get it just right. Um, we, what we heard was it was too much, um, at the, at the work session and board meetings. And now, uh, with that change, it's, it's, I, it's, you know, about half and half, you know, where we have 18 briefings and 18 uh, work sessions and board items with other activities sprinkled in. So, um, for your, for your information, you can, we're hoping to have a discussion where you can kind of give us some more guidance there. Um, and sort of what you'd like to see and how you like to spend your time.
I just have a question here. So, uh, when I look at this, this is what's planned right now. For example, executive sessions come up on an as-needed basis, so I assume that we're not, we're not held to this.
That's right.
Flexible. I, I just want to make sure we're thinking in those terms.
That's right.
And we can request more briefings if we need them as well.
Absolutely.
Danny, before you move on, uh, I just wanted to announce Commissioner Rogers is in the room with us, Chair.
Okay, so, um, so that's kind of big picture. You saw a little bit about through libraries, so that's changing. We wanted to give my colleagues. Oh, I'm sorry.
Chair Harrington.
So I heard a couple of things, uh, through this presentation. I heard the as-is, so as-is provided to the board through this uh, roundtable packet and the, the detailed spreadsheet provided to us. But I also heard this is going to go through further refinement and feels a bit like a moving target to me. So, um, I wanted to share that I did have, uh, in my one, in my monthly one-on-one with Commissioner Willie, a conversation about what he was looking for out of this tool. So, um, I'm attempting to, to share that here. And that is, he's looking for a, a good sketch of what it is our key focus topics are from one quarter to another. And so towards that end, getting this at-a-glance summary on this slide is useful to, to deliver the point that some further refinement is needed. But I think staff, you're still leaving it up to us to use the filters to figure out what the, the big energy focus items are. So from a commission standpoint, what you know, we have is limited time and limited political capital. And so we're trying to figure out which, which quarters we're just going to have uh, information availability and which ones we're going, staff's going to need us to rely upon either direction or decision-making. Um, I appreciate that staff, uh, is being clear on what the work session and the board leading meeting load might be through this 12 and the six. The briefings definitely need more work because what I heard in this presentation is there are briefings in work session, there are briefing invitations. And then there are briefings that staff is counting on us using either through boards, board members reading reports and whatnot shared with us by email. But also what, there are certain briefings where they're relying upon us to take information from those reports and memos and follow up with them. And so it's still, it's still very confusing to me or still not clear. The state of the information, so, um, I'm, before we end this whole topic today, I'm going to be looking forward to the plan to, uh, work this through, uh, concrete. You know, a, a concrete plan, you know, by the end of, of, well, probably by the, given that we're almost at the middle of March. I don't know if we'll be able to, we need to achieve it early in April and really get this anchored before the end of Q2 is here. Because I don't want to have to revisit this every single month. I don't think any of the board members do, so. Okay, so I just wanted to, to bring voice to Commissioner Willie, uh, Willie's, uh, request for more clarity from one quarter to another so that we have more balance over the course of a year. And that, uh, through the course of the conversation that he and I had, what, what we're struggling to sort out, so. So I'll leave it at that for now, and we can keep going through your presentation um, and see through the whole board discussion how we can accomplish some further refinement direction. Thank you for listening.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, um, I think you gave a good preview of what we'd like to accomplish, so thank you so much for that. Um, so, uh, what we'd like to do is just to give you, um, to try to land on that sort of like the, like, the commissioner, like Chair Harrington just said, the, um, the sort of like the sketch out what looks like for a quarter. What we thought we could do is have, um, Marnie and Erin talk about their specific portfolio areas and focus in on that quarter-two activities to show you a little bit about, you know, what that would look like even the sort um, as it is right now. Um, and I think the, the positioning that we'd like to be is that we, we are completely open to feedback and want to eventually get this, uh, right for you so that it is a useful tool for you. Um, and so, uh, go ahead and start with Marnie, and then you can just tell me when to advance a slide, or do you want to do it?
Good morning, um, Commissioners and Vice Chair Fai. Um, for the record, Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the ACAs. And I'm just going to go through a couple, um, of examples from Housing, Health and Human Services and, and, um, kind of show the different levels of, um, of, um, board engagement. So, um, the first one that you see on there is the Supportive Housing Services. Um, SHS Work Plan, traditionally, the board has reviewed that and approved before we, um, take it to, um, Metro. And so that will be a board meeting. And when I was sorting through this, um, I really used that lens of does the board need to provide direction? Or does the board need to approve or adopt something? And, and those types of items really landed in either a work session or a board meeting, depending on, um, what was needed. Um, and then, and then you'll see an example of an activity. So you are all very much aware that there are a lot of activities, um, in housing services. So those are grand openings, those are, um, celebrations of new services. And so those were listed, um, as activities so that you can get an idea of what quarter those activities are coming up. And then, um, the other is the, um, another board meeting. Um, because this is another area where the board would need to approve, um, this action, which is the acquisition or potential acquisition of a motel for the shelter. So that's an example from housing. Go, oh. Did I do it? And then I um, so, yeah, this is, and then, um, Housing, Health and Human Services are grouped into one functional area. And so, um, this is an example from, um, Health and Human Services. Um, the CAT tours that you have all been, um, going on are also listed in there, um, as an activity. And then some examples from Assessment and Taxation. Um, these are, um, examples, one, the first one is the foreclosure process um, that this board asked for so that we could walk through with facilities. What does that process look like from the very beginning through, I believe it's a six-year process? Um, so what are the different steps that are taken to really try to support people and avoid foreclosure? And then what happens once we do have to, um, foreclose? So that would be brought as a work session because it's, um, informational, but also. Oh, go ahead, Chair Harrington.
You're muted, I believe.
Yeah, please do the slide and then, uh, before you move to the next slide, I'll ask my question. Sorry.
Sure, sure, thank you. So the, the other one on there is, uh, um, the rank choice voting. And that we decided could be done as a briefing. And, you know, as I thought of briefings, it would be a written memo. And then there's always the invitation, as Danny shared, there will always be an invitation um, to provide one-on-ones or two-on-ones. Um, and a board member could decide, you know, I think it's really important that we have a, a full board discussion in public and ask for a work session or a presentation. Um, but ranked choice voting at this point, it's just an update. And, you know, what, what's happening would, you know, if, if it's passed, what would we need to put in place? What are we working on? So we, we think at this point it could be a briefing because there's really no action or adoption from the board. I go ahead, Chair Harrington.
So this is, uh, this, my feedback is on ranked choice voting and how the, well, actually, for both of these topics, this is where the description is really vital. Rank choice voting, um, what, what, we need to be able to have a better understanding of what the, the topic is all about. Um, so ranked choice voting, you know, we've had presentations before about how it works. So, uh, you just mentioned, uh, should it be, um, should voters approve it? should voters approve it? Well, I haven't had on my radar that is the May election asking the voters to approve ranked choice voting or is it a briefing on uh, given that we already know the city of Portland uh has embraced ranked choice voting for um their city elections, I believe, I guess I should confirm that. So is it just a matter of us understanding uh what at a high level that means for the budget because elections is going to have to get new software and do some some different um ballot processing than previous. So so that's on that one where I think the the deliverable slash project definition would really help us. Um, then on the sec, the previous one, foreclosure process work session, this is where I really um zoomed in or focused in on the word process, right? Uh, you've let us know previously that because of case law, things have had to change. So what that topic is all about is the process by which uh staff, facilities and county council, I believe that's what CC means, have to do to move forward. So um, I just want to reinforce that some of the deliverable descriptions, particularly for briefings, need a little bit of work.
Thank you for that feedback. We'll make that happen.
Or maybe I'm slower than my other colleagues here. So if the four of them uh or three of them in the room may maybe all set and I'm the only one that needs some further clarity. I can't see them. So um.
Your questions are valuable.
Okay, okay, thank you. I don't want to be taking up so much time here if nobody else has any problem. So thank you.
No, I think I think you bring a really good point, Chair. And I have a question along those lines. Perhaps, do do you think we need another column? Like, how do we the dropdown, how do I sort out policy? I know you said um board direction and it was listed as a work session. I think the assumption is built into that will be where you get the thumbs up or come back again, kind of. But how do we sort out and how do we be more more explicit or more specific? Sorry. And I I think I'm hearing the feedback to be more explicit um in the description about what, you know, what we're bringing before the board. So for example, ranked choice voting, Chair Harrington is correct. Um, that right now it's it's happening in the city of Portland and we have several. I think it's like around fifteen hundred people, including Commissioner Threes who um need that are voting on some Portland um uh initiatives. And so we have worked with Portland. And so that's why we thought this is just a briefing because we have talked about how ranked choice voting works. This is just an update to tell you um what we put in place, how it's going and how we're preparing because um, there's a lot of conversation out there in a lot of different cities within Washington County. There's conversations at the state. Um, so just kind of letting you know what are we doing to ensure that we're prepared should um this should more ranked choice voting become um necessary within Washington County. So that that's why we were thinking of it as an update. That's just an example.
Yeah. And I think my question is, like, how do I use this document, this worksheet? Where I'm able to sort out policy specific and when that policy discussion is coming so that I can do my homework. So how do I use that? So I don't.
Yeah, Commissioner Phi, I think what what you're highlighting is if the description of ranked choice voting had been um update on implementation, uh then it would have been clear that there isn't a policy there. So that one is not a policy question, but rather a service update.
Um, and Commissioner Phi, I I think we're hearing your feedback and I think we can look at um better descriptors, both in the board initiative um dropdown menu as well as when we're describing the deliverable or the project. So that that's what we'll try and see if that's more help. Um, and then I am turning it over to my colleague Erin Calvert.
Thank you, Marnie. Good morning, Vice Chair Phi, Chair Harrington and Commissioners, Erin Calvert for the record. Um, so again, this is just an example of quarter two, public safety and what you'll see. So we're, as you know, we presented the jail planning jail expansion study to your board on, I think, January thirtieth. And so we're currently working on developing the project charters and the advisory committees, and we received a lot of feedback from your board during that session. And so uh, the goal in quarter two, and we're getting pretty close right now, is to come back to your board with a briefing. Probably a memo, but again, we have to further define what that is and that it meets um the information that you need to learn about. Um, so that's a briefing that should be coming to you March and April, March or April. The next line, as you know, also from the Public Safety and Justice Briefing Paper, we've been working on key messages and stakeholder presentations. That is in progress and listed to you as an engagement for an activity. So as you know, we're planning a um a night that the board will host the legislators, hopefully. And that's in progress. So that is coming to you, I think, in April. And then the next, uh Chair Harrington, you want to go ahead or finish the slide? Okay, I'm with you. Um, and then on courthouse planning, as you know, we're all still waiting, I believe, just to figure out if we're going to get some courthouse planning funding. So we're all really excited and anxiously awaiting that. So that is listed right now as an activity because it's falling under the board initiative around the advocacy. But clearly, once we know the answer, that will probably shift into more of a meeting and a plan. And then that will that's probably going to be in a good illustration of how this document might become really dynamic. And and that title will change and the engagement will change and we'll do a better job at outlining the next steps before to get the funding. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Erin. Um, uh, the use of there are the definition for activity is becoming clearer and clearer to me. So for note-taking purposes, uh a definition, the definition of the category of activity are those events where board presence or uh, yeah, board participation is is sought or welcomed. And additionally, uh, board uh playing a role of advocacy for a topic. So I'm starting to understand activity better. Thank you. Then I do want to raise a concern though um with the um, the jail planning slash jail expansion study. We had that early briefing and the board's comfortable with the context of the the early definitions and how you're proceeding with the RFP. But I I wouldn't be comfortable, what, here's my problem. I want to make sure that the board and staff are on the same page with regard to the process, right? The the kind of stakeholders that are going to be participating. Um, and you're right, we gave you feedback around that. So I made the assumption that this line item is the last stop for the board before the process really gets implemented. And I may be wrong about that. So.
That's really helpful feedback. I think that was sort of a gray area of kind of what the board, you know, would you like a work session, just a even a brief work session to come back and say, here's the documents, does this meet what the what the feedback that you gave us on January thirtieth? And I think that's exactly what we're talking about today. It's that little bit of gray, like, is this a quick work session?
Yeah, so here's, uh, you won't be surprised, I think, by my description of how my brain works on this. When we're starting off a big uh, big project, whether it's multi-year or all in one year, the time doesn't matter. But it is a big appreciable product, project. We need to make sure that we are one Washington County on it, right? And the way to do that is to make sure that the proposal has achieved the thumbs up from the board. And so for the jail planning, it's towards that charter. Who are we trying to seek? Not so much the people, but the categories of people to do that work and make sure that we've all had the opportunity to be on that same page together as a board. So you may have a briefing paper, right, that you want us to read ahead of time and in that work session packet. But other than a work session and a board meeting, I don't, those are the only two forums that we have to make sure that we are speaking as one board, right? Five members as one board. So I think that is a topic where you do, as you as you just talked about, it may be a short stop, right? A fifteen-minute topic, although those are pretty rare for us, given there's five of us. So if we, if a bunch of us have questions or just a couple, um then, you know, probably a half an hour, but we should make sure there's a stop.
That's really helpful in guiding this process. I appreciate that. We can make that adjustment.
Is there, is there a a definition difference there? And I'm thinking that to me doesn't sound like a briefing. It sounds like a check-in. You know, it's it's like, uh, are we, are we okay with this? Check moving forward.
Yeah, if it's going to be at a work session, it's full board direction, uh right? Or if it's an affirmation um at at a board meeting. So, yeah. Good question, Commissioner Threes.
Ready for next slide? Any more questions? Okay. So this is just a glance at emergency management. Um, as you know, I believe it's scheduled for our April round table.
So that's not a training then.
Yeah, this might be an activity. Or I don't, so this is a good question. Feedback, please. Yeah.
Um, I've taken activity as things that are outside of board work session, round table or uh BCC meeting. So um yeah.
So.
Cause, cause training is for the board skills.
Might be, but this is kind of being designed as a training, but we may not have the right definition then, Brad.
So, uh, Brad here. I think using the word training is helpful in this respect because all the board members will be there. But we're trying to designate that it's not a public meeting and training is an exception.
Yep, that's the definition of training. So
Okay.
Um, I'd understood that we were going to have this tabletop exercise and that we're comfortable with it being a public meeting because it's about how this work happens versus training uh in the classical sense of building up our skill set as as a board of Commissioners, Board of Directors.
Yeah, I I'm just trying to make sure. If if we want it to be a public meeting, it can be a public meeting. But if we want it not to be a public meeting and it's truly training, that's an exception to the public meetings.
I believe to Chair Harrington's point, we were planning a training in a public meeting. But I want to make sure that's meeting everybody's definition. So if the round table will be public.
Sorry, a training, as Brad is talking about, is a term of art.
Yeah.
Right? That it's not used because you don't want to have it in the public eye. It is used and defined clearly through ORS so that it is about our skill building, for example, I'm using my late-term words. So this topic has never been proposed from the board, has always been proposed from the board as a public meeting topic. What we've chosen to do is to slot it in a round table.
Can we call it an education? Or something different? So the the confusion isn't there.
It's just call it a a round table, right? BCC engagement. It's still a public meeting, folks.
Yep, yep. That makes sense. That's helpful. Thank you. Update that. So that is coming to you on April. In April, your round table. I just lost the date. It might be the seventh, but now I don't know. Thank you. Okay. And then my last slide is just a quick capture again of quarter two and facilities. And that the um, under the board initiative facility asset management, as you know, this the facilities condition assessment has been pending. We're hoping to get that back and get that first preliminary look to you in May. I do want to note that on your work plan worksheet, I believe it says April. So that's part of that um dynamic piece of when we get information and that shifting piece of timeline that um to your earlier point of not wanting to have to update it and, you know, know when the updates come, but just it's just illustrating that sometimes we do our best to slot and then the slot changes a little bit. And so how we communicate that, I think, will be something that we also want to work on to ensure that there's not version control and infusion on timeline. Chair Harrington.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm just trying to understand with the facilities condition assessment, is that something where you're anticipating right? Because staff's doing a lot of work with consultants and whatnot to gather the information. And you've let us know that in building that comprehensive capital improvement plan, the facility condition assessment will be part of that. So I'm assuming this is a once and done with the board?
So I believe so, but I do want to check with Laurel on the timing of that. I am not certain if it's sort of a a first draft look or you do have questions. Are there things that we need to go back and look at? So I want, I can check back with Laurel.
Okay, I think it's okay is if if at this juncture, it's a once and done, I'm going to use this as an example. It is the facilities condition assessment uh report. Report, I guess, just report or report back to the board, right? Because it's our first ever.
Right.
Or maybe we need to put first ever in there, right? Our first comprehensive one is part of the deliverable definition, right? Um, and uh, so just a little bit of a refinement on the deliverable will go a long way. It'll let us know, oh, right, this is a once and done. Yay! But it's a, it's a big appreciable one, but because it's mostly doing the work and bringing the board up to the same place on the journey as staff, we only need to do it once. That's great.
Thank you. And that's being, goes back to Danny.
Well, thank you, Erin and Marnie uh and Brad uh for kind of helping to to walk through a couple of different examples. Um, so I think um, as the chair alluded, right now, it it is a rather dynamic uh uh document. And I think what we're trying to do is to find that sort of like just right. And so um, I think we're contending with, you know, a lot of information, a lot of data. And then also trying to develop a new process document that sort of captures all of the nuance that that there is. And you know, the chair talked about like a term of art, right? Like, we're we're trying to um be to be explicit, but also capture nuance and uh complexity. And and so we we are you know, really here to take your feedback as a body um and as individuals because, you know, we we want to honor the requests so that you can um have something that gives you the information that you need so that you can uh effectively, you know, govern and understand how your, you know, your time will be spent and and sort of how that time then eventually could could translate into that that impact or those outcomes. And so um I think we'd like to just open it up for discussion. Um, we've heard some really good feedback and, you know, we're all taking notes. Um, but you know, is there anything that's missing or other adjustments that need to be made? Um, and really, we just want to think about how we can continue to improve this. Um, a little bit of a preview, what what we were hoping to do and to establish a practice is that um, you know, as there's doing, as we're doing check-ins and as things are happening, what we had, what we had hoped to do was to bring this document back for your sort of full consideration to do a look back and a look forward in July, but that in the interim months, if there were any changes or adjustments, that we would communicate that through your staff assistance. And that they could, you know, kind of let you know where if a month was moved or if uh, you know, there were any changes that that was there. But um, we're also open to uh, to to doing that. And so we were hoping that we could uh get your feedback. And so we were hoping that we could uh, get your feedback, um, send out another communication to everyone with the sort of updated latest. And greatest, you know, get a sort of, you know, thumbs up. We can work on this till through July. Or, you know, welcome, you know, welcome to, you know, go back to the drawing board after that as well.
Should, should we start with Chair Harrington since you're online or let's go in the room then? Commissioner Trees, Roger.
I'd, I'd like to just make a few comments here, you know. First of all, it is, it is the chair's role to hold our agenda. And I appreciate the work that has gone into this with staff and with the chair. To, to lay out what our, what our future looks like. What I'm uncomfortable with is my, my ability to utilize this tool to the maximum. And so one of the things I'd like to see is to work with our staff assistants to, to. Make sure that they're embedded in this and that therefore I am. And it comes to mind because of the comment that uh, Vice Chair Phi made earlier about. If I use this document for uh, for education purposes, how do I know if it's a policy? I think that was your question. And it's uh, I, I personally want to be able to be more engaged. In this document than I currently am. So uh, I just, that's, those are my comments. But I do want to make sure that everyone knows from my perspective that this is the type of document in my mind. That keeps things from falling off the plate. And that keeps us on the mark as we move forward and, and, and gives us the opportunity to have the time. And, yeah, and the attention to the detail that we need today. So I do appreciate it and I know this has been a series of iterations, but it brings value.
Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you for going through that exercise. It's very difficult when you have people with different styles. And you're trying to figure out where the board's at. Having been through a number of different boards, a number of different people, I can certainly tell you that whatever you land on. It's going to change again with the next board and the next set of personalities. Um, I, I come at this from a very different point. And so I, I compliment you. This tool that the board wants to use, that's great. Uh, mine is I always look at it from a business perspective. And I look at it as the CEO is responsible for a whole bunch of lines of business. Which is not running an ice cream store and a grocery store and a gas station. I mean, we're running a whole bunch of things. And each one of those, we have a CEO or you call them department heads. Who uh, have to make decisions on how to operate and operate effectively. And they do that through existing policies and through budget. And so my style, which is different probably than everybody else in the room, and I appreciate that. I just trust those CEOs to run that business. If it starts altering, I got a problem. If there is budget requests, I want that to bring back. If there's a direction on how you're going to run the store, that's a policy decision. So you bring it back. But operational and educational things, I, I, I can get that myself by talking to you. But um, I mean, it's a good start. I, I wouldn't be disappointed if you get a new board in two years or four years or five years. And they all say, well, that's nice, but I won't do that. Uh, so I, I, I appreciate you're trying to land on something that makes sense. But if you, if you, my sidebar, I'll stop with this. If you could start out with the premises, what? What are you attempting to do? And what you're attempting to do is to say what? Do you have changes in how we operate? That you all need to know about, right? So if we have, if you do, then that's, that's a policy decision or something that's going to affect the budget. So that's what you're trying to do. If you're trying to educate through this, it's the wrong mechanism. I mean, cause frankly, each one of us come with a whole bunch of different backgrounds and skill sets. We've seen a lot of different things. So you don't know who you're gonna land in these seats. You're, you're gonna work with different people with different backgrounds. So, so you're, that educational piece to me is on the side. That's where you take people and you sit one-on-one or two-on-one and, and educate them. But I still am not clear, other than you're gonna tick the boxes. You know, what, what you all say needs to be done, because we hired you to do those things. Not us. I mean, I'm not an expert in health, human services, public safety. So I, I'm, I'm still not understanding exactly, but if this makes everybody happy and you think that's good work. Then I'm thumbs up, let's, let's use it.
I'd just like it to make, uh, I like to react to Roy's comment. And my reaction is what, what this provides for me personally is a look into the, the. The next, the next year, two years and what's out there, what do we have to be aware of? And where am I, where, where do I potentially need to be engaged in a little bit? At, at a different levels. And also, when I, when I'm in a public setting, that I am well educated about what's on our plate. So I can talk about those things. So I would, I would contend that it's a little bit more than policy, policy focus. For me, this is that long-term look and uh, being able to say, okay, I know where. Where the county's headed around these things. Doesn't mean that I'm driving it. Doesn't mean that I'm uh, engaged in, in the operational side, but it does mean that I'm aware. In, in some cases, I also want to know those policy pieces as well. But I'm just saying, for me, it's a good tool and I just want to know how to use it more effectively.
Chair Harrington.
I just wanted to make sure that each one of us could have a round of, of sharing our thoughts. Before we uh, turned to full board discussions. So Commissioner Phi, if you could go first and I'll go second.
Okay. Good work. Um, this, you put in a lot of effort. And I, I probably should have asked this the first time you brought this to us. But have you looked into if there is other softwares that exist that can make your job easier? Um, that are already that, and what the cost would be to the county so we could? Um, and then, so is there any models out there? And then the other question I had is, uh, and, and I'll just tell you the story background is that. You know, every month towards the end of it, I look at the rolling agenda for the next month. The last week of the month. And this is just my own process. Um, and I write it down, all the, all the, everything that's in there. Cause this is just how I learn myself, how I learn. And when I write it down, I identify or I put a star mark, start every. Topic that I'm interested for Brenda to schedule a briefing for me. And I say, this is a topic of interest. Can I have a discussion with? I'm not sure, like Brenda gave me a training on this, this, uh, this document we reviewed. I'm not sure how I could do that. So I'll ask again. I know I asked last time. Is this the intention of this software worksheet? To replace the rolling agenda? Okay, I see you're shaking your head now. And then, so then I think the other element is what's in it for the board member to also use this? So I think, I think that is the piece for me, going back to what Commissioner Tree said earlier. The policy piece, if I could disaggregate this data information so that I know. Um, will be really helpful. It's a lot of good information. It's a lot of details, a lot of work and effort you're putting into it. So I'm not yucking your yum here, because I recognize the effort.
Would you repeat that? Yucking your yum?
What is that?
No, yummy, yucking your, yucking your yum. Yeah, I said it right.
I don't know what that means.
I said, I used to write, right? Yeah, thank you. To yuck your yum, to yuck somebody's yum?
Is that a, is that a Canadian?
As younger than me.
Somebody's yum. Well, I, I don't know where I was going with that. Now I love my train of thought.
Don't worry, I got your point, Commissioner Phi. I understand.
Chair Brian, so I think I've said, some of the one person got it here, so. Rogers and Trees are two and two, we're.
Yeah, good.
I break.
Okay, so.
So that, that, I just, to put a finer point, you did a great job. I, I just need a little bit more time to be on the journey to bring, to understand. Um, because the rolling agenda works for me um, very well.
So, so um, thank you commissioners for that feedback. Um, and I'd like to speak to some of it. First, I want to start with, thank you staff for putting this together. Uh, this version that we have is, this version here for the March round table is an improvement over what we had in the January. Uh, round table, which was the, the first crack at this tool. Uh, let me step back a little bit and speak to why we have this tool. How staff is endeavoring to use it and uh, provide it as a tool that will help the board. Uh, manage its time. We're the ones who have the limited time and limited political capital. When I started as chair, there, I had done my research with the former chair. Uh, former management staff and former commissioners about what tools they used to manage their time. And political capital over the, during the course of a year, let alone uh, as half. Half of each year or as um, over multi-years. And the fact of the matter is, they weren't using tools that were public. And also, this board knows that we are catching up uh, for lost time. Where there wasn't enough. Engagement with the board on policy and investment decisions. So that the county is positioned in a healthy fiscal. And a healthy operational basis, not only for the current budget year, but for future budget years. Which is why we've been spending a lot of time with staff on foundation building. So um, that's why we, so we. As the new commission as of twenty nineteen instituted that we will have a rolling agenda. So that we have a future look. We also had a tool that we referred to as board initiatives. Well, because of the level of learning that we've had around how we need to catch up for lost time. And do that foundation building so that we are doing our job of providing. The, the resources to our direct staff, county administrator and the county council. We have to do a better job of providing them with the tools they need to deliver services. Twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five and continue to have a healthy financial basis. And a healthy operational basis to serve as the county government. As such, last summer, you might remember, we decided to no longer use board initiatives. As the, the tool to keep track of, of that. Because there was more than could be managed through that very simple tool. And um, we had expectations that our staff would come back to us in that September round table. With a, a. A information set for what was before us for the second half of that year and into the next year. And it's just taken a while, but staff has done a terrific job of collecting information. And now we're going through the refinements to make sure that this new tool. Has clear definitions for us and that the data set is one where we as the board. And our excellent staff are speaking the same language. So this is not about styles. This is very much about how the board and our staff do the policy. And investment work that is needed to provide. Um, services and sound fiscal and operational foundations. To serve as a county government now and into the future. So um, I wanted, I, I raised that point because. Commissioner Rogers, this is not about styles. This is about what our understanding is of the critical things that we need to do as a board. And have board decision-making. And following Oregon public meeting laws. So it is very much done in public and not behind closed doors, because I will not do that. I will not break Oregon law. I will not make as chair decisions on behalf of the board. No, it, we are the board. I am one of five. I can help lead. That is very much a chair's role. But I am not going to decide as one of five. And I appreciate Commissioner Tracey, your comment about um, the chair's role of holding our agenda. But I do that also very democratically and make sure that you have visibility into it. You have influence to it, right? Through this tool. This new tool as well as our rolling agenda. There should be no mystery to you in terms of what your job as a district commissioner is. And I think our staff, our management staff and every employee throughout the organization knows. That they can be proud of their board doing things, um, being interested in their work and trying to make. Do their job for our. Community. I do think, oops, it looks like my internet is stable. Can you hear me okay?
You're breaking up a little bit.
Sorry. Speak up if.
Yeah, Chair, you're, you're still breaking up. Commissioner Trees, you're suggesting to turn your camera off. Maybe that will help. Oh no, I think now completely. Uh, I, I have one last question and then we can move on. There's no other. We'll move on to the next topic, which is actually the chair's topic anyway. So we can just, we have time. Um, oh, it sure dropped completely. Uh, okay. Is, so where will this reside? This Excel document, is it on the OneDrive or everyone can access or?
So, so from a process point of view, we've got the, we've got, everyone has a copy of it. And so you'd have a copy so that the, the inadvertently no one erases everything. So uh, but that is stored, the, the, this primary document is stored centrally. And so what we had hoped to establish as a process is that, you know, as the, as the tides change and as the work evolves. That um, updates would be captured monthly through staff assistance. Um, and that we would then sort of, you know, each month they could kind of switch out your copy for the most updated version.
That my copy is not linked to the original document to update?
No, but if you did have changes that you would like us to make, we would, you know, your assistant would just send that to us and then we would make those changes centrally.
And then. Is there a community facing part of this?
Uh, this is a, a sort of, you know, a board document. Um, so we, we haven't posted this or anything aside from what's been posted on the round tables.
But it's discussed in public and if there was ever a, a public records request, we would provide that.
I wasn't employing, implying that we, we anything behind the scenes. I don't think anyone gathered that of anything. I, I, I'm not sure what that was saying, but I, I just think managers have certain roles and we have certain roles. It depends on your perspective.
So I, I, I think right now, uh, we, maybe we should take a five-minute break so that we can give Catherine's chance to get back on. You okay with that?
Really?
Okay.
Are we done with this topic?
Are you all done? Do you have what you need or should we wait for the chair?
I think she would like to.
Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
And then. Like to come back.
And then we'll come back and have the chair close us out. Okay, with you?
Okay.
Five-minute break.
You hear us, Chair Harrington? You're, you're on mute, Chair Harrington. You hear us? You hear us, Chair Harrington? You hear us, Chair Harrington? You're, you're on mute, Chair Harrington. You hear us? Testing, testing, one, two, three.
Although Kevin, I think the chair is trying to figure out.
Okay. Alright, so I think we are good and back to you by Chair Five.
Oh, can I make a?
Chair Harrington, it seems like there's a double mute on your end.
While we're waiting on that, I want to make a point of clarification. Just a reminder on sharing information through. Your staff assistants with Danny. Get them from multiple people, then we have a, a serial meeting by sharing that. The chair's saying no, but.
He's agreeing.
Okay, yeah, so we want to avoid that, so we'll come up with a different process.
And Chair, while you're figuring out the mute, but we took a five-minute recess break, um, just. So we're now coming back. Yeah, we're gonna close at the last. We're still on the review of BCC work plan. And we're just waiting for you to have the final word.
Yeah, I was attempting to do video. On my laptop and audio on my phone, but couldn't get it yet, so I'll work on it. So, um, I was at the point of sharing my feedback as one of five. Uh, and Zoom is the only thing I have running on my laptop right now, so. Um, what we know is that staff provided to us the detailed spreadsheet. That goes behind the summary information. And, uh, so I looked at that as one of five and there are two areas that. I don't think, uh, represent what the board had asked for, for process. And I'm happy to work directly with staff to fine-tune this information both. For our feedback from today as well as on these specific things that I have. So the two specific things are ARPA. What we asked staff to do is to come back to us. In time for a July work session for potential reallocation. And right now, I have to go off of memory in my notes. I believe when I pulled down the. BCC initiative of ARPA, it looked like briefings, briefings, and then the report, the final obligation reporter that. Twenty twenty-four report as, uh, a briefing as well. And it's like, no, not quite. You missed the mark a little bit on that detail. We want to know. What the final, um, run rate is. So that by July, we can go through and fine-tune the final obligations. In time for, um. For our instituting those before the end of twenty twenty-four. So that category needs a little fine-tuning. And then the other one is around libraries, um, where, uh, there's library levy, there's library gu- governance. And I believe, I know we're having an April work session. Um, but I think we had expectations about work being done, both to, um. Further, uh, racial equity across our library system. As well as making sure that before we go into the next levy. That we have a better understanding or a, across the. Communities of Washington County, what base services are that each of the jurisdictions, each of the cities and the nonprofits. Are expected to have on their own and how library levy or WCCLS levy. And implementation works on top of that. So I think there's a little bit more work there. I apologize that I can't run the spreadsheet and Zoom right now and stay with you. So, um, uh. What I would, based upon the feedback that I'm hearing from the board. We do want to make sure that the data is brought up to, uh, slightly. Um, better sense of stabilization so that you can use this tool, Commissioner Phi. Uh, and Commissioner Treese, well, all the commissioners, but since you two talked about your use of the tool, that's what I'm coming back to. This is a tool that will work in conjunction with the rolling agenda. The rolling agenda is used, um, by our staff essentially on a three or four-month rolling basis. To, um, make sure that they're scheduling each of those meetings productively. Um, so for your, uh, policy understanding or inventory taking that. As I refer to it, that you, you described, Commissioner Phi. Um, yeah, you will, you'll still be able to use the rolling agenda for that. As you look at it just for the next couple of months, two, three months. But when we're looking at the entirety of what are we trying to accomplish this year? Right? We do that every year, right? We do it at the beginning of the year. We have more certainty about the first half of the year than we do the second half of the year. But this tool is also advancing that it's taking stock of those multi-year programs or pro. Programs and policy decision-making that will flow from one calendar year over into another calendar year. And I really applaud our staff, uh, for putting together this new tool and for conveying the information. Um, but I, I feel pretty strongly that. We need to not have a third step to refine the data, uh. At our understanding, but rather I would propose to my colleagues that. I work with staff to fine-tune the information based upon your feedback. And that from there, they, uh, continue to, um, train up your assistants. In the use of the tool and release that information to you and your assistants as they have done. But make sure that you're, you're trained up with your assistant in using the filtering capability. To, um, get your specific questions and, uh. Uh, needs met. And that we do that, it's March now, and that we do that, um. No later than, uh, during the month of April. Because we've got to solidify this and move on. Um, so, and I think we can do it. I think we have it in our grasp. It's like ninety percent of the way there. We just need to polish that. That brass object a little bit more, so it's all shiny and bright and then take it from there. Does that seem like a reasonable approach?
Yeah, Commissioner Treese is already.
I'm nodding.
Yeah, giving your thumbs up.
It may be hard to see, but I'm nodding and giving thumbs up and, uh, see, see great value and agree that it is. At, you know, we're, we're steps away from the finish line on this.
And then Commissioner Rogers also gave you the thumbs up with that request, Chair Harrington, as I am too. So you've got the full room, uh, thumbs up on that. Any other questions or?
If I could make one last comment, uh, for the benefit of our staff, from all of the board members. Um, you've really done a good job in putting together a new tool and a comprehensive data set. And I hope you feel good about that. I'm proud of you for doing that. And my colleagues here have talked about using this toolset and the information. That powerful one-two punch, uh, really does help us. So I hope you feel good about the time and energy you've put into this. It's a very useful and powerful tool. And now we're catching up with you in terms of how to use it. I can't see any of staff's faces, so I.
Oh, they're smiling.
They're smiling.
Okay.
Clapping. Yeah, happy. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're fifteen minutes behind for the next topics, but Chair Harrington, this topic is. All to you, uh, it's BCC topics, roundtable calendar, state of the county proposal. Future town halls, committee assignment planning. Chair Harrington, I turn it to you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Phi. I appreciate the help. So, um, you have a two-pager from me. Uh, which is titled, "The Current Roundtable Plan." I don't remember what pages they are in the latest, uh, roundtable packet that I was able to download this morning. Uh, can you all find it? Do you have it in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, so what I tried to do is update this and I went over it with, um. Our three direct reports, uh. County Administrator Angie, County Council, as well as, uh, the CEO for CWS. And I tried to highlight in yellow some, some particular things that I want to call your attention to. So, um, as, as we talked about at our February roundtable. Commissioner Willie was suggesting that, you know, maybe we should have these roundtable days, CWS learning days. On a day of the week different than Thursday. Um, so I took that to heart as well as worked with our senior staff on what, uh, what. It, their sense of what the board needs for time and then. The roundtables are an agenda that we really own. Topics where we need some additional time, uh, to, for discussion and understanding. Than just a standard work session. So you see very much at the top that I highlighted in yellow. Check the dates and so that's part of what we need to go through here today. Some of the proposed dates do end up being Thursdays because we have a bunch of holiday Mondays. Uh, and also trying to sync these up between the two agencies. Hopefully I'm not speaking too loud for all of you there in the room.
Yeah, it's perfect.
Thank you. So I'll move on to April. Uh, April fourth, uh, is our date for, uh, a roundtable meeting. I just wanted to, uh, go through this and make sure that state date still works. It does work for Commissioner Willie. Uh, as we know, he has multiple committees that meet on Thursday dates. So, uh, in the month of April, I also chose to put in a reminder that. You'll be receiving a survey for the county council's six-month review. This is where we thought, given it's our first ever tabletop exercise with emergency management and it's multi-hour. We thought, heck, um, let's not add stress to the number of topics that need to go to work session. Let's move that to a roundtable. So that's where, where it is. Um, then we do have, uh, some other topics. Uh, for that roundtable. Um, County Council will be taking us through an office workload, um. Assessment. I'm not sure if an hour is enough time or not, so he'll help me refine that. Um, Ms. Angie is going to do a walkthrough with us for using a new tool. And that is a quarterly management report. So that's pretty much, and of course, we always touch. So that's pretty much, and of course, we always touch base on the, the rolling agenda. And maybe that is the meeting where we'll do just a, a final sync up on the, the BCC work plan. We'll see when we pencil that in. That is the first week back from spring break. So in May, as we know, it's all budgeted all the time in May. So we're not having a Roundtable at all or CWS Learning Day in May. And then that brings us to June. June is another busy month. This is the month where by contract, we need to complete the CWS CEO Annual Performance Review. We also have a couple of special AOC days in Salem. I think it's a Ledge Retreat and Board Meeting, maybe. So we don't have any set board topics other than a mid-year check-in. So we'll see how that goes. Oh, it looks like I brought myself two copies. Okay, so then we're into July. And guess what? We have a lot to do in July. We need, we need both a Roundtable for Washington County Board of Commissioners and we need a CWS Learning Day. So there's some proposals in here. We certainly in July, as the Board of Commissioners, we do some reflection on the budget process and capture, while it's still fresh in our mind, what worked for us, what we might need to tweak. We also have, coming up in Q3 and into Q4, we, we have a Board Training Topic around lobbying that needs to be scheduled. We also have a Board Training for Legal sometime in Q3. And with regard to legal, we'll have another one in the, the first quarter of 2024, which will be good because we'll be a new board formation then. So let me finish the next one and then we'll come back to the question of the specific date. Then working with our CWS CEO, you know, we canceled the April CWS Learning Day and that is now set up for Friday, July 19. And you can see just below that, the, the scheduling timeframes that the CWS CEO and I have laid out for a regular, for, four times a year for dedicated days for CWS. One in February, one in May with the budget, one in July, one in November. So that's the cadence we're hoping to do in 2025 as well. So that's on Friday, the 19th. This is where the scheduling of the Board Roundtable comes back. I wasn't quite sure if you wanted to have July 19th and July, excuse me, July 18th and 19th? Or if you wanted to have them set up on different weeks? So it's either July 11th or July 18th. What are you thinking? What would you like?
July is scheduled here.
July 18th is J-PAC Meeting in the morning.
So I'm agnostic. Commissioner Willie is agnostic. So we're really looking to the three of you to.
July 19th works for me. Since July 18th is J-PAC.
Yeah, so the question is July 11th or July 18th?
July 11th. Thank you, Chair. I think I did say nineteen thirty.
I'm trying to look at my schedule from the standpoint of the travel for Clean Water Services. So that's, and I, I believe that either one works for me.
Okay, let's make it July 11th. You thumbs up on that, Dani?
Oh, boy.
Okay. Okay, that, then moving on to August, you're coming back to Commissioner Phi's question earlier. For attendance at IWA, there's the conference date. Then there's the days before for workshops and the days after for workshops, and then travel days. So the best I can see is that, or actually the worst case. So your best case of participating, having an immersive IWA experience is travel on August 8th. And sorry, I didn't put the day of the week in here and come back on the 19th. I believe Commissioner Rogers, you're also away on vacation for three weeks, right?
A little over. I gotta look at that. I'm looking at my calendar as we're talking.
He's gonna take a wonderful vacation in August. So I think those two things combined leave us with, you know, it's not looking like we're gonna have any Washington County Roundtable that month. Are you all thumbs up on that?
I believe that's smart.
Thumbs up in the room.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to September. September is another one of those tough months because we have a Monday holiday. And then we have a, and, and by the way, we know as humans that it, it serves us well to have a Roundtable in September to really embrace, here's, you know, we're back essentially from summer vacation. So it's like, okay. And how do we get done all those things that we strive to have done or are required to have done by the end of the year? So it's a good time for us to sync up. But we also have the AOC District Eight Meeting, and that's scheduled for Wednesday, September 11. There's also an AOC set of meetings on Friday and Saturday, September 20 and 21. Ms. Angie has her swearing in on Tuesday, September 24th as the incoming ICMA President. So the main topics that we've been planning on for the September Roundtable are reviewing that second half of the year focus and that cadence of work and also getting going on our next, oh, I made a typo. Should be FY '26, not '25. Yes, '25, '26, Financial Planning Budget Process and Early Thoughts. So that's in the mix as well. So does September 12th work for everyone? I see Commissioner Trese's head nodding. Thank you. Okey-dokey.
Good in the room, all three thumbs up.
Great, great. Then we move to October. And, you know, keep in mind, Q3 is July, August, September, and we still have to nail down the dates for the BCC Training as well as the legal training. I've not lost sight of that. Don't worry, Brad and Dani. So then we're moving into Q4. October and Commissioner Willie and Commissioner Rogers will be going to WEF Tech. And Commissioner Rogers and myself serve on Quick, and I'm going to add some vacation days around that. So I went over the schedule with Commissioner Willie. And so it looks like Thursday, October 3rd will be a good day for our Roundtable. I see Commissioner Trese shaking her head. I take it.
I'm nodding my head.
Yes, yes, that's what I meant.
All three thumbs up.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then in, uh, moving forward into November, I was running out of column space, so I cheated a little bit. We will have on Friday, November 1st, no emphasis, Friday, a CWS Learning Day. Then for November, for a Board Roundtable, we have a couple of options. And in talking with Commissioner Willie, I put in a preference here. We could meet on Thursday, November 7th, or we could meet on Monday, the 4th. The reason that we put, we preferred Thursday is to ensure that on Monday, the 4th, you still have, we wouldn't have a Friday, Monday, working days and also to ensure that if you use time on Mondays to be organized for the week, reading all the different packets for board meetings, committee meetings, that you would have the time for that. So, and remember, November 11th, as I put in here, is a holiday. That's Veterans Day. And then we have a Thanksgiving holiday too. So, and we're being mindful of Commissioner Willie's vacation and the AOC Conference, so it adds up.
And election day is November 5th in November. Just, I, I, I'm just, November 5th. I was just looking to see all of the different pieces.
So how does Thursday, the 7th sound?
Thumbs up in the room, all three.
Terrific. Okay. Now remember, I still have to work on the training day. Then we go into December. And so unlike this past calendar year, we will not be having a CWS Learning Day in December. We do have the opportunity for up to three board meetings in December. That's a pleasant change because the holiday weeks are shifted out later in the month. So this is where we usually use some time in December to take stock of where we're at, start to do some organization. So we do need to be mindful of the fact that we will have a new board member in January. So either at the January Roundtable or the February Roundtable, we'll do, we'll need to go through some settling on committee assignments and the, the plans for the year as a new full board. So the topics are still a little squishy. Commissioner Rod, excuse me, Commissioner Willie and I did look at the schedule and based upon committee meetings, Thursday, the 12th, I think it was, does not work for him. So we are proposing either December 5th, which is a Thursday, or Monday, the 16th. Our preference to the three of you is Thursday, the 5th, but we can also make Monday, the 16th work. What do you all think?
I like seeing on the, on Thursday, the 5th.
And I was just alerted that the 16th is HHS Summit. HHS for AOC.
For your sake, I'm hoping that moving forward, AOC will be a little bit more judicious about their time. Because what a huge time sink AOC has become, especially in the whole HHS arena.
Right, yeah.
So I think the AOC Government Relations Person for HHS has to tighten things up.
Yeah. Well said, Chair. The 5th, thumbs up for the 5th?
Yes.
All of us, all of us in the room is thumbs up Chair for the December 5th.
Okay, well, that's, that's great. And I'll, in working with staff on the BCC Work Plan, I'll make sure that I haven't stepped on any dates that would impact them as well. Next, I want to move on to the State of the County Proposal. I have been working with Philip Ramsford on that. Hang on a second. I asked Jory to help me write up some notes for myself. And.
Would you like to have Jory come to the table?
Yes, that would be marvelous. I'm madly trying to find the email and I can't seem to.
Jory is at the table, Jory. For the record, yeah.
For the, for the record, my name is Jory Messner and I am Staff Assistant to the Board, specifically for Chair Harrington. I am also looking for the email.
I found it.
Oh, great.
Yes, so the three of us met. And so the proposal is that I will provide a short, targeting 20-minute speech live in the auditorium. It will also go live to tape, so it will be out on YouTube in real time as well as afterwards. We'd like to keep it light on you, especially since we have some pretty significant budget stuff to go to. So I'd be asking you to be present. But in putting together the outline of what we want to talk about, we really want to be highlighting those things that, you know, we don't, what our community gets to hear about, right? When they attend our work sessions or, or watch the meetings, they hear a lot about what our challenges are, what we're striving to do, but needing to problem solve. And the, the media, newspaper media likes to trumpet conflicts or problems with government. And so it's really incumbent upon us through vehicles like social media and the state of the county to really trumpet that the county government is doing terrific work, that our employees are dedicated, you know, twenty, over 2,500, 2,700 employees do great work day in and day out. So what we're asking is to ensure that those highlights include feedback from you or topics that you're proud of as commissioners. So Philip and Jory will be following up and asking you to submit just a short list of projects or initiatives that you're proud of because we want to make sure that we are working with the departments to highlight those results. And then we'll also have departments do that as well. And then part of the State of the County approach is also to highlight the employee groups from the portfolio sets that we talk about for county government as well. So Philip feels really good about the, the level of championing for this State of the County and the, that it'll be positive, that it'll, it'll be light. And they, they do have the staff capacity to pull the material together and get it done for an in-person event right there in the auditorium the last week of June. So colleagues, does that seem like a reasonable approach? So colleagues, does that seem like a reasonable approach involvement for you being present, but not asking you to have to put together any kind of speech or video or anything? But it will include those things that you're, that you're proud of, and it will be delivered as such.
One thing I wanted to add really fast, as Commissioner Trace just asked this question, what is the date? We're looking at June 26th.
Oh, and I see Philip there, too, sorry, I didn't. Let me turn it over to Philip and Jory and see if I forgot to bring something to life.
And in the meantime, Commissioner Trace has a question.
I just wanted to let you know that I won't be here, that's the CWS trip to Laos. So I, someone
Can we do it there?
You, absolutely, can I call in? So I just, I just wanted to put that out.
And there are no conflicts on the states for Commissioner Rogers and myself. Commissioner Trace noted.
Yes, Commissioner Tree's trip is in the rolling agenda.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, so thumbs up on our State of the County approach. We did talk a little bit about Board of Commissioners Town Halls earlier in the year in our January Roundtable. Excuse me, I have the, the slides of that that I brought with me to remind myself. So if we look back at the slides with regard to Town Halls, we chose to come back to the State of the County approach for, at this Roundtable, but also when we talked about the budget process and the communication plan, we wondered, we confirmed that we don't want to have a Board Town Hall on the budget this year. And that we're having that State Legislature Forum on Public Safety and Justice. So at this juncture, we don't have any set a Town Hall approach for the remainder of the year. But if we need to have some special Town Halls, we have room for that, but we need to be mindful of that. So I think what we'll end up doing is through the course of Q2, as we have the results of the short session, and we have a better idea of what we need to do for county government, by the time we get through June and July, we'll know, hmm, would our community benefit in the second half of the year, right, September through the end of the year, having some special topics? But right now, I don't see that we have a vision for that at all. So we're, we're, we still have a, no, we don't have a need for a plan.
Okay. Agreed, agreed here, yes, all of us in the room.
Okey-dokey, great, great. I didn't want to leave that as a, without closing the loop with you on that. On committee assignment planning, I believe we took care of the, yes, we already took care of the Region 1 Act. One, but I think one of the things Commissioner Rogers that we want to plant a seed for is you've carried the Board's representation on the Work System, Inc. Board for quite some time. And we may want to get a liaison transition towards the second half of the year with regard to Work Systems, Inc. So I don't know, is there anything else you want to speak to? You also handle the Audit Committee as well. So are there any further seeds that you want to plant with your colleagues leading towards, you know, there will be new assignments as of 2025, but any institutional transition you want to work towards between now and the end of the year?
No, none that I can think of, but I think it's good a transitional plan. Abrupt changes are never good, yeah.
Okay, okay, well, we, we certainly have future months moving forward on that, so, okay. So that's it for me on BCC topics. Did any of you have anything that we need to integrate in either now or into the future?
Not seen, seen head nods as in no.
Okay. Okay, all righty, great. Well, then Commissioner Phi, I'll turn it back to you and see if, where we are in the agenda and what next steps.
Thank you, Chair Harrington.
Do you need another long break?
No, I, I was just going to suggest that we just zoom into the next topic, since we took a break right before this, and you're, you're Catherine.
Can we take a five-minute break, so I can have a bio break?
Cause I, I was busy trying to problem solve my internet connection. Oh, that's right, I just assumed our break was your break, too, but you're right, you were probably, okay, let's do, let's do a five-minute break. Let's be a 10. 10-minute break, and then Stephen Roberts.
34 seconds.
Commissioner Trees would like 10 minutes, Commissioner Rogers suggests 3 minutes and 30 seconds. We'll do 10 minutes and then we'll come back, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
In 3, I said 6 minutes and 34 seconds, or something really odd.
All right, welcome back, commissioners, and back to you, Vice Chair Phi.
Thank you. Thank you, Kevin, okay. Welcome back, and Chair Harrington, thumbs up if you can hear us. Okay, so the next topic is Washington County Coordinating Committee Governance and Work Plan Discussion. Jenny and Stephen Roberts, take it away.
Great, well, I'm so excited to be able to introduce my colleague Stephen Roberts. We will be providing a brief overview of the history and some of the origination of the WCCC, as well as an overview of the participa, the county staff participation, and then we'll open it up for two commissioners and the Chair for discussion. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Director Roberts, and move from there, oh, they're clicking.
To Chair and Commissioners, I'm Stephen Roberts, Land Use and Transportation Director. I'm going to move fairly quickly through a presentation, there was a memo in your Roundtable packets, hopefully you just looked that over, so I'll not belabor the content there, but want to just move through this fairly quickly and then just open up for any questions or conversation time. Any other thing, and so really quickly, so the Washington County Coordinating Committee will just review what its purpose and roles are, how, what the membership composition is, I'll do just a really quick run-through of some history of the committee, and then we were asked about the county staff role and some time commitments, that sort of thing, in the, in the committee, so we'll touch on that briefly as well. So the Washington County Coordinating Committee is a city-county forum and partnership space, if you will. The purpose, as is stated in the committee's current bylaws, is to review and comment on major land use and transportation issues, lands and projects, to provide a forum for discussion relating, resulting rather in a coordinated approach when appropriate, establishing positions of consensus on topics, those land use and transportation topics, to carry into regional discussions at other tables like JPACT, PAC, the Region 1 Act, and others. And then there are some specific roles that have been delegated to the WCCC by your Board, related specifically to the MSCIP and TEE programs. Those roles are specified within the administrative rules or the ordinances for the, for those project or programs, I should say. So these just touch a little bit on the various roles. So these just touch a little bit on the various roles within the MSTIP decision-making process on this slide. And I should introduce at this point the WCCC TAC. That's the Transportation Advisory Committee. That is a staff body composed again of city and county staff members that advise the coordinating committee itself. And then again, the coordinating committee has this recommendation, specifically a recommendation called to your board in the MSTIP program. And similarly, in the TDT, there are things that the coordinating committee is able to decide, such as project expenditure allocations are reviewed by that committee before an agency expends TDT funds. And then, of course, the board actually adopted the ordinance and the county then sort of provides the overall administration of that program. So the membership composition, so it is, as I mentioned, consists of elected body or elected officials from the county and from each city within the county. Those are voting members. We have some non-voting ex officio type members and those are Metro, TriMet, Port of Portland and ODOT. A little bit about the committee history. So this was actually really interesting for me. I had not gone back and done a deep dive into this topic until this came up within the last year or so. So this has been super informative for me personally. So going back and looking at original documents from 1982, it appeared that there was an informal staff group that had been meeting from the county and the cities of Beaverton, Hillsborough, Tigard and Toowallaton for a period of time, also engaging with Metro, ODOT and TriMet representatives and really looking at the growing transportation needs and challenges in Washington County. And you can imagine 1982, we were a quickly growing county, just probably on the cusp of some really, really significant growth that happened in the 80s, 90s and the early 2000s. So really trying to take a countywide look at the growing list of needs and what were the opportunities to try to bring funding to help meet those needs and approach this all in a very coordinated fashion and as a partnership. So in 1982, there was a recognition that this really was policy work and needed a policy body to really help guide that work. So the five members that were listed up there, the four cities in the county got together and established at the time what was called the Washington County Transportation Coordinating Committee, WCCC. And the five members all agreed to establish that formal body with elected representatives to really initiate the policy work that I just outlined earlier, really looking at those countywide transportation funding needs and challenges. At that time, in 1982, the board did adopt a set of bylaws and it's unclear to us, we haven't tried to do a lot of detailed research, but it appears the intent may have been for each member's agency's governing body to adopt those bylaws as, if you will, the founding members. At the time, the bylaws actually had a provision that said each member's governing body needed to approve amendments to the bylaws only if they changed the membership. Other provisions could be amended by the committee. So in 1986, there was a resolution adopted by your board that designated the coordinating committee as the county's Transportation System Plan Update Steering Committee. And at the same time, while it wasn't part of the resolution, at the same time, the board also approved amendments to the bylaws that expanded the membership to all of the urban cities at that time. And since that time, there have been a number of additional bylaw amendments that were approved by the WCCC in 1986, or sorry, rather, 1989, 94, 95, and then not again until 2001. I'll just give a really quick run through. So the committee membership, or the committee purpose rather, was expanded to also specifically address land use topics in 1994 and that was the time when the transportation word was removed from the committee name and it became WCCC. In the bylaws, over time, we acknowledged the board delegated roles that the WCCC has in the MISTIP and what was Traffic Impact B, now known as the Transportation Development Tax Programs. There were some changes made to the voting and ex officio agency membership over time, changes to officer positions, which I can run through if there's an interest in more detail there, and then revising some guidance specifically for the officer election in terms in the most recent amendment in 2021. And then there was a question asked about the county role and staffing in our role as the WCCC. So we took a look at that and wanted to start off by saying that in the bylaws, the LUT director for the county is specified as the committee secretary. So in that role as the committee secretary, we have a series of tasks which are bullet pointed here in summary for you. And we currently sort of divide those duties up. So I actually spend a little bit of time mostly just reviewing agendas before we publish those, working with our policy analyst, Jessica Pels, on actually setting the agenda topics and coordinating for the meetings. We do meet with the chair and vice chair ahead of meetings to just run through the agendas and make sure that they feel prepared ahead of time for the meetings. And then we have administrative tasks that we do. So we actually are the record keeper, if you will, for the committee and retain all of those records, actually do the work of preparing the agendas, making sure those get distributed and uploaded to the online agenda system. And then our ITS folks help us with our audio/video work. They help us to make sure that we get our Zoom meetings set up and running, get those live streamed and then posted to you afterward. And you can see it on the slide there. In total, we expect that we average about 30 hours a month at that task. So it comes out, if you were to annualize that, about 0.17 full-time equivalent employee. And that's all I have. And like I said, we're here to help answer any questions, provide any additional info and look forward to your discussion. There, I see your hands up.
Yeah, I wanted to say a couple of things. I do have a clarifying question on that last slide, but I'll hold that till later. I was one of the folks who asked for us to talk about this and I think we can get rid of the slides for now. Due to information from the December 11th, 2023 WCCC meeting, this is where they had a brainstorming session about their work plan and there were seven different topics that they brought forward. And I thought to myself, you know, so given that the Washington County budget carries the expense for WCCC, there were a bunch of topics there that did not relate to transportation. Right? And Washington County land use with the definition or the adoption of urban and rural reserves is, you know, that chapter is closed. So I did print out the minutes. They're available on our website if you want to look at them. But I'll read them off to you. Status report on urban and rural reserves. Well, they can get that from Metro, right? We don't run urban and rural reserves. So why are they asking our general funded staff to spend time on that? The second one, regional housing production update, including surrounding communities such as Newburgh and Woodbury. Now, why on earth would we want precious Washington County staff time to be used to hunt that down? They should get that from Metro. Important bills in the 2024 legislative session. Well, you know, our agendas and our discussion as a board is all very well public. And they also have their Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition in the region where they do that work. Waste management strategies. Well, that's firmly at Metro and M-PAC. Transportation project funding. Ta-da! This is where, yeah, from Washington County Board's standpoint, WCCC has a role for MISTIP and for TDT. And if it benefits us a little bit to be synced up on the Washington County transportation funding as it fits into regional, great! That's a good fit for WCCC. Metro urban growth report and urban growth boundary decision. That's Metro, right? The mayors have a Washington County Mayor's Meeting. They have their Metropolitan Mayor's Coalition Meeting. They can attend to M-PAC. Why are we carrying that expense? You know, this isn't the first time that I'm questioning what we have drawing on our budget. And then the last one was Washington County transportation priorities. Once again, ding 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 ding, that certainly does speak to WCCC for me. So you know, the role of, as Stephen has highlighted, the Washington County Transportation Committee and then into WCCC has evolved over time, just as our cities have evolved over time. They have much larger populations back before the 80s, the 90s, the early 2000s. But they also have more requirements placed on them from the state as well as from Metro. So I'm just trying to call the question, isn't it about time that we be more cognizant about carrying the cost for things that don't relate more directly to our work? It's third order work, in my opinion. We're paying for the Zoom hosting, we're paying for our staff to go get those speakers, we're paying for our staff to brief officers that aren't county board members. And so I'm saying, look, you know, you Washington County mayors, you want to get together and talk about those topics that are directly Metro-related? Go for it. Go do it in your forum that you carry, but don't be drawing further expense to the Washington County budget for that. This isn't about relationships, folks. This is about dollars and cents. So that's why I wanted, given the results of that discussion, brought this up subsequent to that. So that's really a background that I wanted to give to this discussion. So, and I can't see any board members, so Vice Chair Phi, where's it go from here?
I think we'll have a discussion. Commissioner, I'm looking, commissioners in the room with me to see who wants to go first.
I'd love to hear your comments. You're our representative. I have one question, Stephen, but I'd be on whatever you.
Yeah, I can go. Stephen, this is really helpful for me as well. I learned a lot and a lot of this, you know, you really documented a lot of the activities that happened prior to WCCC. So you clarified a lot of questions that I have. And then I sort of sat down and said, what other questions that I have further in terms of WCCC? So I came up with, it turned into like 10 questions, but I sort of consolidated and tried to be more concise in the questions. So I think now it's just four questions. And this is all the board and the structure of the WCCC. So the first question I have for you, Stephen, and you don't have to provide the answers and I can certainly get and paste these questions here in an email to you. But I'll ask for the record now. First question is, why was it necessary for the Board of Commissioners to approve WCTCC and the technical committee's bylaws in 1986 and 1989, but not thereafter? And then the second part of that first question is, the language in the amendment section remain consistent across bylaws updates, with the exception of the reference to voting membership? So that's the first question I had. And then the other question I had in reviewing the materials that you compiled was, what entity actually owns the formation of WCCC and WCCC-TAC? And then the third question is, as the WCCC serves in an advisory role to the board regarding TSP, TDT and MSTIP, why are they not listed under the Boards and Commissions section of the website? And then the second part of that question is, should it be? And then the final question was, in reviewing the auditor's February 9th communication to the board regarding the MSTIP audit, early communication on the risk assessment noted the need for better codification around MSTIP existence and funding. So the question to you as a staff is, is there a need to also better codify the advisory role of WCCC during this process? So those are the questions I had. I'm happy to send it, but I wanted the board to also know. I know you're hearing it for the first time, so you don't have to, but those are the questions I had after reviewing the materials that you put together. And thank you so much for, this is really helpful, not only current board, but for posterity reasons as well.
Brian, I'm looking to you. You said you also had a question.
Oh, I had a question. On the hours that are spent by staff on activities, are they reimbursed out of funds from a MISTIP program? How are you charging those? I know that off the top of your head.
Yes, those of us that are involved in that, it's an overhead department-wide cost. And so are in, much like the county internally to our department, we have a cost allocation structure. So we're pulling bits of funds from the various funds that support the work in our department.
MISTIP would be paying for that 30 hours or 0.17 FTE?
Yeah, certainly would be contributing road fund, TDT, MSTIP, like all the various resources. And that would include probably a little sliver of general fund because we are drawing from every gap division and fund.
I understand that, yeah, I thought. That was my question.
I just, a comment and thinking about this. Bottom line is we're the convenor in this area, if I can use that terminology. And while I understand what I believe is the chair's comments, they're kind of like creep. Let's keep this focused on what the purpose of WCCC is. But at the same time, I, and I'm not suggesting that anyone here is recommending that WCC not exist, but I think this gives us the opportunity, and I need to say this very gracefully, it gives us the opportunity to, to some degree, as the convenor, control the agenda and to make sure that this stays as a Washington County-focused piece so that the information goes to Metro and in terms of J-PAC, in terms of M-PAC, and it is under our purview. And I would be, maybe I'm reflecting a little bit on some of the things that we're experiencing right now with SHS funding and housing affordability. I really want to make sure that we continue to support for the opportunity to have that voice. Is that fair? Maybe my intimations are too oblique. I just want to make sure that we are the convenor with understanding of the boundaries of what we convene for, but at the same time that we work collectively to have those messages go back.
but at the same time that we, we work collectively to, to have those messages go back instead of the messages coming to us.
Chair Harrington, I see your hand.
Thank you, I did want to speak somewhat to that. I think your assessment, Commissioner Phi, Trese, that this has gone a little far afield is spot on. There, there are two large city seats at MPAC, right? Beaverton and Hills, Hillsborough each have seats, and there's another city seat. So, I don't see a need, and the county, as the county, has one seat. So, the county does not need to be the convenor for those three positions to be effective. Similarly with J-PAC, the county position is for the county, the city position is for the Washington County cities. And the, the nature of what cities have to do under Metro evolved considerably through the nineteen nineties with the formation of the urban growth concept and the maturation of MPAC and J-PAC. So, this isn't the nineteen nineties anymore, this isn't even the early two thousands anymore. We're in the twenty twenties, and I think it's time to ensure that the opera is, the operish, the operations of WCCC continue to feed, fit the needs of the Board of Commissioners, as you, multiple ones of you correctly stated that WCCC does have a formal advisement role for the TSP, the TDT, and MISTIP. And I think it's, it's time for the cities to grow up, collect themselves better, and for our general fund to no longer carry the load of making it convenient for them. I don't even think it's fair for some of our other overhead association that is outside of transportation to be carried from those other funds either. So, we don't have enough money to do the important work that is needed for serving our community as a county government from both our general fund as well as our special funds. So, that's why I think, as you said it quite eloquently, Commissioner Trese, that we do need to make sure that there is some focused control over the work plan or the agenda, so to speak, the purpose. And I, I applaud Commissioner Phi asking those questions. I do think that WCCC does need to be listed as a board and commission, and we do need to get some clear operations around that. So, anyway, I just, I wanted to respond to Commissioner Trese's raising the need for some improvement. I think there does need, I'm in agreement, there does need to be some improvement, and we need to, to own that and move forward with it.
I don't, I don't have any other questions at this point.
I don't. I think you have questions to come back.
Yes, it would be very helpful. I was trying to write questions.
I will say.
You can forward those, that would be fantastic, and Chair, I jotted down several things that you mentioned too, and I think between, between those, we'll put together some written materials and, and provide that, provide that back to you all.
Thank you.
Great, and we can, we can have this slotted in into our roundtable agenda coming up in, what is it, April is our next one? So, yeah, I'll work with staff to get that figured out and slotted into our upcoming roundtables. I also wrote down pretty much word for word what Commissioner Phi said, so, that's helpful. Good, okay.
Thank you, I think.
Certain, what the direction is, what are we doing, other than Stephen's going back this minute?
From what I understand, and I know Chair Harrington will do a better job of summarizing that.
So, would you like me to do?
Yes, please, Chair.
Yes, yes. So, what, and Commissioner Rogers, if you have more to contribute to the discussion before we bring it to closure.
Well, I definitely have thoughts, but I, sensing a direction.
Well, now's the time to share them.
Sure. Thank you, Stephen, first of all, in the background, I lived most of that, and the twenty-one, I wasn't there, so I don't know what happened on that amendment, but this, this has been a very interesting relationship, starting back, I think after Bonnie took over from West Myland back, and the relationship was really sour with the cities. We did a great deal of work in those days to foster the partnership that we find ourselves not to have existed, and I think it worked over the years. And so, it's, it's a very delicate balance. That MISTIP was a big partnership between the cities and the county. There would not be a MISTIP if, if the cities had not supported it. So, I, I've always cautious on how we approach things, because if there's a perception that the cities are a committee, and I always, I, I understand our structure, but it is a partnership, they're just a committee. And what I hear is that they are likely not to be as engaged with this. We would like them to be, which presents problems for future. My, my personal thoughts, and nobody else's, just my personal thoughts. I liked the J-PAC Metro model, I think it made sense, but remember, that was concurrents between J-PAC and Metro, they had to agree, there wasn't, one could just do it on its own, and Metro didn't supersede J-PAC, that was part of the MPO process, so I liked that. There has, as I said, be a balance. One of the things that's been unbalanced is that the county still today in year two thousand twenty-four represents about two hundred and some thousand unincorporated people. And if I look at any city, there's anyone that even is that large. And there's always been this comment, should there be more than one representative from the county? It's hard i- in a representative government not to say that, you know, a third of your population is represented by one, and you've got cities with two or three thousand that has the same vote, so I, I think there's some done there. I, I think, I, I understand budgetary impacts. I also understand that i- if, if all of you don't craft this very carefully, our relationships are going to be very difficult. That's fact, I can tell you right now, without discussions in the last week, and I can chewed on a bit by some folks who are very concerned about what we may not do, so. I'm concerned about that. The la- last thing I am, and this, this is Roy only, the rest of you can disagree a hundred percent. When I look at the current list of projects, and I'm going to embarrass you, Stephen, and I don't mean to, but we met on the list of projects. What we did with MISTIP back in the day, with, in fact, the whole WCCC, we had a county system that was meant for all of us to agree to. It was taking people from one, you know, one city to another, or one hub to another. It, it, it seems a bit like these projects have gotten away. They've gotten very localized, and that wasn't the intent, I mean, maybe that's the intent today, but that certainly was not the intent. And the thing that I asked you, and if I'm embarrassing you, tell me and I'll stop, but I said, if you were to select those that met the criteria of saying, are these of countywide significance, these projects? You were hard pressed to tell me yes, that you were hard pressed to say that those were the ones that would have met the criteria of days of old. So, so I'm concerned about that, and so there's a ne- need to have some discussion. If it's going to be simply that twelve or thirteen people are going to say, we pick what we want to pick, and our particular look out, that, that wasn't the intent of the program ever. We were pretty successful over the years of not doing, it looks like it's more than fair, and I deferred it in pieces, because you, you're there, but I, I can pick projects, and they, they do not look like they're of the highest and most significant, so. What am I saying? And I'll summarize it, one, I gotta be careful with the relationship, two, it looks like it's straight a bit, three, there are some things that cities want, and then things they don't want, but I think there has to be some balance in this process, so. Whatever it's worth, that's my comments, and carry forth, and have good times.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Trese.
I was, I was just wanted to clarify a minute, because I think, I think Commissioner Rogers, what, what I heard you say about the selection of projects was that in previous years, there was a more what's good for all approach, and now it's much more what's good for me, for, from all, all, all participants. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
I, I don't, thank you, I, I don't want to say that as direct, but no, that's, I mean, that's a good point. In days of old, what I did is I said, well, you would always like to pick projects, because you were chairing, because I said, I'm not from any district, I'm from the county. But I, I look at pro-, this is just me speaking, none of you, I look at projects, and it sure looks like they're pretty parochial.
Okay.
In, in my opinion.
Well, might I suggest? Might I suggest that as we go through the MISTIP three F prioritization, that we come back to that map of roads of, and arterials and collectors of county significance, and make sure that each of those focused projects meet the criteria of, or answer the question, how do they serve the function and form of that particular arterial or collector? Part of that continuous understanding. Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, you're on point, but there's a little bit of problem, and that is that, remember, the maps can be amended, and nobody was attempting to curtail anybody from amending, add, so. I look at it as almost like a hospital where there's a triage. It's a turn, say, we treat all of these things, I agree, so they're all important, but what's the most important? And I have a sense that we're not triaging. That, that's my, just looking at pro-, you're just smiling, Stephen, and looking at me.
I have so many thoughts, yes.
Well, I, I want to respect the fact that you had a one-on-one conversation with Commissioner, with Director Roberts. But that does not set a direction from the board, right? So, I'm trying to be mindful that you've provided some feedback, so how can we bring that back to test? And along with that, what does that tell us? We need to consider for future funding rounds for MISTIP and future programming. This isn't on staff, right?
I agree.
We need to provide direction to staff to fulfill our needs, but we have to own it.
But if we took and we said, what's not necessarily just on the list, because the list has gotten pretty, pretty large. And if we said, well, what are the most?
The list is long because the, the county has grown and the system is larger as a result. Yet, the level of funding has been capped by three percent, and therefore, we have fallen further and further behind on the backlog of investments. So, I think we have, we have a way to move that idea forward and continue to have the Board own the responsibility of it, is what I'm suggesting. I also want to highlight that, at least practice-wise, MISTIP changed, the allocation of it changed. When I was a community advocate in two thousand four, five, six, MISTIP changed so that no longer are dollars allocated to specific cities. And it's only being used for rural bridges and the roads of county significance. So, that wasn't, it's not in the bylaws at all. It may be in the administrative rules, but that was a big functional change that did affect, in my viewpoint, the, the motive for mayors participating in WCCC for transportation. But the, the difference between available funding and the needs has only gotten bigger and bigger since six, Washington County successfully put the MISTIP program forward three times on the voters' ballot as recently as nineteen ninety-five. So, in terms of next steps, what we have is getting those four key questions answered, making sure that we are mindful of the, the operationalizing of the county significance through the upcoming phases, and we'll, we'll visit that for sure with three F. And we've not, I've never heard the Board talk previously about committee, WCCC committee representation beyond the one county board member. So, you know, there isn't, it isn't a proportional representation committee at all. So, I think that's, that's a whole new topic, and we'll have to see if we want to touch that. Commissioner Rogers, I haven't seen that the Board has made any, has had any interest in prior years, in your thirty-some odd years with WCC and wanting to change that balance, and we'll have to give some further thought once we have the answers to those four questions, to see if that's something we even want to pick up. So, go from there. So, Commissioner Phi, in terms of wrapping up this topic, that's what I have as the summary from the Board.
Okay. Final thoughts?
No, I would like, we didn't get to my final point, that was that it would be interesting if, if we were to rate the countywide significant, and I don't know if you can do that, Stephen, that there was a, is there any matrix you're using nowadays that would rate projects as to their, meeting the needs of going town center, town center, city, city, crash information, is anything that would tell us what's the highest priority projects that meet, still meets all the criteria of being significant, or is that not done?
Yeah, I think, I think when we bring back the MSTIP three F project recommendations, we can touch on some of the evaluation criteria that were considered in that process. Yeah, so we'll be happy to touch on that.
Okay, I think we are set in the room, Chair Harrington.
Yeah, I think in terms of topics, that's everything that we had planned for today's roundtable. Was there anything else from Board members there, or from our two, our three staff who were in the room, CWS, CAO, and County Council?
I'm seeing head shakes now in the room. So, no.
Okay, Commissioner Phi, it's up to you to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, we will adjourn, Chair Harrington, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, take care, everybody.